Can y'all hear us? All right. Hold on, I'll be there.
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Sorry I could not be there in person, but thanks for accommodating the virtual appearance.
Oh, no worries. I appreciate you being here.
Hello, Nick.
Good, good. I like my new seat. Just rotate every time. Switch around, mix it up.
Cool. Now I like to sit at the same spot every time.
That's great.
I'll have you sit here.
You can rotate around.
That's why I have you over there.
We don't want to move, though, but we get used to something.
I was like, I'm sure that you've been there. Everyone else.
Like my grandkids. You change one thing and half of them just freak out. They're just like, what's going on? I'm like, where are you guys? What do you care?
I'm kind of leaning toward bringing it up. Not saying that's a perfect word.
Got a little, little kitchen remodel is starting pretty soon, right?
Autumn birthday.
Yeah, yeah.
You're right on the water.
Just a little fix-up thing. You're right on the water. It's like, oh my gosh. It's just stunning when you... Yeah, it's just stunning. You know, when that sun hits the water a certain way and it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
I think we're done.
So we could have been there this summer.
The...
But that's...
Then that's what I'd rather do. I remember the, the, the second house I... It was the most miserable, John.
Okay.
Are we starting?
We are live. I haven't recorded yet. I will wait until 6:01 to report, just so that you know that people can hear the conversation.
So watch your mouth.
I was just gonna say, am I in trouble yet or not? Because I'm getting close.
Oh, no, you're right.
So.
Hello, Red.
We made our meeting in the light.
Well, as long as it's not the light. The light's what we see, you know?
And you go towards it.
Yes, I got caught in it. My daughter is...
No, we're not eating.
I put in my daughter's car from school and hated it. They were terrible.
Yeah, you gotta...
It's on go.
It hurt. You wanna put them in the...
Whatever the chair wants.
Eileen, did you get that email?
Yes, I sent it.
Good. Thank you.
Yes.
For those of you who don't know, I sent her the email. I've been there again.
Yep. So you're in, and I saw Eileen's emails. Oh, sorry. Yeah. I didn't see it.
Okay, here we go. Good evening. From March 13th, 2025, Wachem County Planning Commission Meeting is called to order. I'll call the panel. Let me know if you're here. Delph Barton, that's me. Brett Brown.
Yep.
Daniel Dunn.
Yep.
Anita Eisenberg. Anita Eisenberg. Nick Gray.
Present.
Kim Hanson. Kim Hanson.
Oh, he's there, but...
Yes, yes, yes. I got her unmuted.
Julie Jefferson.
Here.
Dominic Musseri.
Here.
Scott Van Daleen.
Here.
All right. Please join me for the flag assembly.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time now for Department update. Mark Porcelia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Commissioners, just a couple things. County Council approved the non-ending multi-jurisdictional population growth target resolution this past week. So that gives the cities and the counties some, and the, and the public some good understanding and transparency on, of what it is that we're planning for, what it is the jurisdictions are planning for in terms of their 20-year population and employment growth targets for their comp plan. At the next council meeting, we'll be discussing home-based business amendments with them, as well as countywide planning policies that were recommended by the commission. We'll also be requesting council approval of the contract for the Birch Bay incorporation study. That's gonna get off the ground here soon, hopefully. And the last thing I have for you is just to update. We're hoping we're meeting with a consultant next week, but our, our goal is to push to have the draft EIS on the conference of plan issued next month in April. There will be a 30-day comment period after that draft is issued, and we'll be also be holding a public, public meeting on that as well. The staff will, and you guys will be forwarded all of the information. So you'll, you'll have all that information available to you. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you. Time now for, oh, sorry, Commissioner Hanson. Thank you.
Pardon me if I'm confusing myself or you. Were you gonna say time for commissioner comments? Or public hearing?
I was gonna say open session for public comments, and then we'll follow with commissioner comment.
My apologies. Thank you.
It's okay. Eileen, would you take over?
Yes. Commission chair, it looks like there are no attendees in the room nor online.
Okay, thank you. So now it's time for commissioner comments. Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
Well, that's quick. I just wanted to report that I had a conversation with Chris Elder from the Natural Resources Department, and we went over some reports on the impacts of, of climate change on sea level rise and increased flooding. And those reports will impact what we might want to do in terms of hazard protection during our comp plan update. And we should look, be looking to see those, both those reports within the next two to three weeks, I understand. And they have some really incredible GIS maps that graphically show areas that will be underwater, and we have to make sure that we're not putting more people at risk in terms of our urban growth area specifications of where a population is supposed to go. And there's, there's a clear evidence that, that current houses will be flooded, roads will be flooded, and infrastructure will be impacted. So I just want to give you a heads up to look forward to that, forward to that, and that should be an important tool for us in our further proceedings, particularly Chapter Two.
Do you have any other commissioner comments? Okay, let's move on to approval of minutes for the February 27th, 2025 meeting. Anyone have a motion for approval?
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any additions or corrections? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Musseri.
Yes.
Van Daleen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Greif.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, so we're on to our meeting topic, the first part. Amending Wachem County codes to allow electrical power lines above 230 kilowatt county-wide of conditional use permits. And did you have a question? And, and I'm not sure who's doing the presentation, whether it's Brian.
I am, actually. Yeah, we're, we're both gonna have one, if that's all right. I'll do the first one, and then we'll move on to Brian, if that's okay with you, and then we'll take questions afterwards, all righty. I'm gonna share my screen here. All right. Can you all see my main screen there?
Yep.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Lucas Clark, representing Planning and Development Services this evening. Also on Zoom, I have Brian Heinrich from PSE, who will give a presentation after me. Once we're both done, we can take questions. So a little history. In 1990, Initiative 490 was placed on the Wachem County ballot. The initiative limited electrical power transmission to no greater than 115 kilovolt outside of industrial land or where it already existed. Wachem County residents voted to enact the initiative prompting, prompting the Wachem County Council to pass Ordinance 1990-124. While the initial 1990 ordinance was codified, it was in fact illegal, as any ordinance proposed, proposed by initiative which would repeal a portion of county zoning ordinance is outside the scope of initiative power. Since 1990, the language of this particular code has changed several times. The most significant update was Ordinance 2004-041, which created stricter requirements for maximum wattage of transmission lines in addition to voltage requirements. This ordinance, as well as Ordinance 2002-002 and Resolution 2003-051, cite various concerns over transmission lines, in particular, the, the potential health impacts that electromagnetic fields, EMFs, may produce. However, in 2016, the World Health Organization stated, based on recent in-depth review of scientific literature, the WHO concluded, concludes that current evidence does not confirm the existence of any health consequences from exposure to low-level electromagnetic fields. Little about, little bit about PSE. They follow a regulated electricity market structure, meaning it is a vertically integrated monopoly that is responsible for generation, transmission, and distribution of energy within its region. In exchange for holding a monopoly over the market, investor-owned utilities, including PSE, are regulated by state public utility commissions. The public utility commissions and the Washington Utilities Transportation Commission uses specific rate-making formulas to determine a fair electricity price for PSE customers based on PSE operating and investment costs. PSE's transmission business is regulated by Federal Energy Regulatory Commission through an open access transmission tariff. This is to ensure that fair rates are charged to anyone who needs access to transmission lines, as it is not economical or sustainable for each separate entity to build their own transmission systems. Recently, PSE has advocated for an increase of maximum voltage requirements in Wachem County code. This change would allow for up to 230 kilovolts in electric transmission lines outside of the industrial zone, aiding in PSE to meet their ability, to meet growing electric, electric, electricity demands. The Clean Energy Transformation Act, or CETA, which was passed by the Washington State Legislature later, requires all retail sales of electricity to be greenhouse gas neutral by 2030. To comply with CETA, PSE estimates it will need an additional 6,700 megawatts of CETA-compliant energy by 2030. Higher voltage power lines will be needed to transport this electricity to consumers. However, since Wachem County is the only county in PSE service area that prohibits 230-kilovolt transmission lines, there is a disincentive for PSE to invest in new energy projects in Wachem County. It is anticipated that Wachem County will have a substantial amount of growth in the future. The projected growth coupled with CETA will increase demands on electrical infrastructure. Amending the code to allow for higher voltage power lines will incentivize new industrial economic opportunities within Wachem County. It will provide needed infrastructure in areas where industry may expand, and it will ensure adequate energy infrastructures planned for and can be cited appropriately. This will also allow Wachem County to utilize state and federal investments in upgrading electrical transmission systems. New electrical infrastructure will require conditional use permits or major project permits. All conditional use per, conditional use permits will require public notice, a public hearing, and eventually go before the hearing examiner. Major project permits will also require public notice, a public hearing, and eventually go before the hearing examiner, who will make a recommendation and eventually be decided on by county council. We'll look at the changes really quickly before we let Brian go on with his. Here are the first of the code changes. As you can see, we removed the sections that refer to the previous code restrictions. Staff also clarified the language around the conditional use and major project permits. Nothing changes there. It's just easier to understand. If the use hits a major project permit thresholds, it will be required. And then here are the specific changes. References to operating 115 kilovolt are removed, along with average loading restrictions. In its place, we put electrical substations and power lines operating at voltages less than or equal to 230 kilovolts, except on land where such permits have already been granted or in those districts classified as industrial. Essentially, this changes the 115-kilovolt restriction to 100 to 230 throughout the county. We're holding a work session to listen to concerns and anticipated challenges. And now I'll pass it over to Brian, and then we'll answer questions after that, if everybody's comfortable.
Thank you, Lucas, Brian Heinrich, Puget Sound Energy. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this issue with you tonight. And I'm also gonna share my, my screen, go through what I hope is a, some quick slides, just to give you a sense of, of where we're at from a, a maybe higher altitude in terms of the regulatory environment that the utility is operating under, and why changing the code makes sense to help us achieve those goals. So let me make sure on the right place there. Hopefully you can see that. Does it look all right to everybody?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Okay, so a little bit about Puget Sound Energy. I think maybe most folks are aware we're the largest and oldest utility in Washington State, serving 1.5 million customers in 10 counties. As it references here, and, and Lucas referenced in his presentation, the Clean Energy Transformation Act is a very significant transformation. And as we strive to meet some really ambitious clean energy laws across the nation. So couple just points to hit on there in terms of, like I said, we're the oldest and largest utility. We are a dual fuel utility. In Wachem County, we do only provide electricity, however. And Lucas mentioned what we're gonna, and I'll cover this in a, in a moment, but here's our, our current mix from a generation standpoint. And I will, will just point out, that's from 2023, so it hasn't changed a whole lot. One thing to note, by the end of 2025, this 18% that you're seeing here, that's coal, that will not be a part of our portfolio. That is part of CETA that was passed in 2019. And, and what we're striving to do is be carbon neutral by 2030. And so removing coal was a, is a significant step in that direction. I wanted to include this slide just to give you a sense of the service territory itself. You'll notice in, like I said, in Wachem, we're electric only. Snohomish, we're only gas only. In some parts of our territory, we are, we serve both, but that gives you a sense of, of our territory. It's about 6,000 square miles across the state. So it referenced CETA Clean Judiciary Transformation Act. I did want to just touch briefly on the regulatory environment at the state level. So here's what I think is a pretty good snapshot of maybe the backbone of those, that regulatory environment that we're operating under. So again, CETA, notably carbon neutral by 2030 and 100% clean electricity by 2045. Some of you in the room, I'm sure, are familiar with the Clean Buildings Act and, and its requirements. Climate Commitment Act, which was passed in 2021, again, aimed at reducing, capping greenhouse gas, greenhouse gases. It's, it's not just the built environment, right? It's clean fuel standard as well is for transportation, which is nearly half of those emissions. And then the decarbonization bill from just last session that ideally streamlines that, that planning process. And, and that's, that was subject to, as I think folks are aware, initiative last year, a lot of discussion, a lot of work done on, on that topic. So just real quickly, I've already mentioned this a little bit on our, as, as we strive to get to beyond net zero. Again, net zero carbon electric supply by 2030, 100% carbon-free by 2045. Goals around natural gas sales, again, in some of our territory, we do provide gas. And then Goals around natural gas sales, again, in some of our territory, we do provide gas. And then this last column, you know, looking at what are those sectors that we can work with to achieve these ambitions? So you know, electric vehicles, liquid natural gas for marine and long haul, renewable natural gas, hydrogen for for transportation, things of that nature. Those are really aggressive new technologies that will be developed in that space. So I mentioned this, 2025 is a big year for the utility as we strive to comply with the Clean Energy Transportation Act. Coal-free by the end of this year. Again, carbon neutral by 2030, carbon-free by 2045. And so this is sort of our North Star in many respects in terms of where we where we headed as a utility in terms of what that generation is gonna look like for us and where we get it. So that leads us to some of the things that we're doing, we are very aggressive in our renewable projects. You'll see that since the passage of CETA, nearly 4,000 megawatts of renewable energy is brought online. We'll have a significant wind farm coming online, I believe, this year, which is about 850 megawatts. That's a facility in Montana. So we're excited about that, making that progress again as we look to eliminate coal as generation. We've got to fill that that space with renewable energy. Just a couple of points to hit on in this slide. This is a very complex pathway for us. We do forecast that the demand for electricity is going to increase and the second-to-last bullet is really one of the reasons why we're here today. The grid does need to be expanded and modernized and this particular item before you is a great step in that direction. To give you a sense of what we're going to have to do to meet the demand in the future, we are forecasting by 2045 that we will need approximately 15,000 megawatts. So today we're less than half of that. So it is a a tall order, but like I said, we are moving in that direction. Related to that, what we do know is that demand for electricity is going to increase. Electric vehicle charging is a pretty significant part of that. But think about in terms of the built environment, the move towards greater electrification in commercial buildings and residential buildings. And I think if you can, this next slide maybe will highlight that a little bit better. This is a sense of where those loads are increasing. We see there's you know, increases in the residential side, but certainly electric vehicles is going to play a much bigger part of that. I believe that Waukesha County as a entity has some some ambitions around their own fleet and what that looks like. The city of Bellingham does as well in terms of you know, trying to electrify their fleet. And electric vehicles are coming online faster and faster. So again, one of the things that we need to do is expand and modernize that grid. We this does underscore a little bit, the vast majority of the energy that we're gonna generate is east of the Cascades. That said, Waukesha County also has several generation facilities in the county. So one in the city of Bellingham, one in Ferndale, and then one in Sumas. And so you know, the goal is to remove that restriction on 115 and allow that grid to be modernized to accommodate the growth in electric demand and allow that system to serve our customers and which is really everyone in Waukesha County. So just, I thought this slide might be of interest for folks. It's just a quick snapshot of how power is how it gets delivered. So you know, generation over the transmission line, this is what we're talking about again. This is a slide that's gonna make sense for folks across the service territory where there isn't a prohibition on the 230 kilovolt. I think we've all seen substations, distribution lines. So there is a key difference between transmission and distribution. Transmission is gonna be from that generation to a substation. Distribution is from that substation to a residential home or otherwise building, commercial, industrial, what have you. And I'll leave you just with this statement that I think really sort of encapsulates, or at least I hope it does, where we're at as an organization. I'd be happy to take any questions or continue the discussion.
Any questions? What is the size of a tower that's 230 kilovolts?
The size, you mean like the height?
Well, the height and the design, I'm just trying to find an image of one. I know PUD has 115-volt towers that are two wooden poles and a crossbeam. And then the half 500-kilovolt ones are the big towers, correct? So what are the 230 ones?
Yeah, the 230 are gonna be a little bit taller than the 115 generally.
Made out of what?
I'm sorry?
What are they made of? What do they look like?
So I think it's I'll have to get back to you. I think that it can be the more, I think it could be a variety. So I think you've seen probably you know, the more traditional wood pole. There's some steel that go a bit higher. I'm sure you've seen those. And then that's it's gonna be one of those. And I can certainly follow up with you on what those look like. I don't know that we have a I don't know that they're all the same.
Right, because I think is one of the questions from a public perspective, they're gonna say, what is it gonna look like on the landscape?
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, I think what you would find honestly is that you probably not can be able to tell a difference at the end of the day. But let me, I'd be happy to find that answer and get back to you.
Mr. Hanson?
Thank you for that great presentation. I personally find an upgrade of our transmission system a critical national challenge to the future we're moving into. This is just a trivial question. What percentage of the overall generation is by people like me with solar panels on their roof feeding into the grid?
Well, it's gonna be pretty small. You're probably at your home, do you know offhand how many how many kilovolts you might, or kilowatts rather, you might generate? I assume it's probably less than a megawatt for sure, right?
Yeah, I think something like 60.
Yeah, you know, it's it's a good question because it's sort of, it's sort of a critical mass sort of question. One singular residential rooftop's not gonna generate much probably beyond what the home is gonna use for, right? But if you know, there's like 17,000 residential rooftops in the city of Bellingham. If everyone or even half had the ability to generate, then it would be significant. But and I think that's, I think that's sort of where we're at in terms of residential generation is is building interest, building participation in it. So you know, on a on a daily basis, we're generating somewhere in the neighborhood of 6,000 megawatts for 1.5 million people. For those of you that are better on your feet with math than I am, that gives you a sense of what's required, right? So I don't know if I answered your question, but it's it's gonna be a very small percentage of the total generation needed.
Yeah. Brian, two questions for you. You know, one counterfactual, what happens if we don't allow for 230 lines? And then I'll ask my second after I answer that one.
Well, I think two things. One is Waukesha County continues to sort of lag behind its peer counties in the service territory in terms of capacity to transmit power. I think that's probably the first thing. And I think secondly, it really it probably negates any sort of future investment. It actually does three things. It negates any sort of future investment in upgrading the grid here. I think the third one is probably the more challenging one is it could potentially require new 115 lines to supplement what's not able to be transmitted via higher voltage line. So I think that's what we're trying to avoid is additional 115 if we can have the capacity to carry the 230.
Excellent. My follow-up question is not a follow-up, it's kind of related. What do the mitigations look like around 230 upgrade? So sometimes you need greater setbacks, additional tree you know, pruning to deal with the arc distance as possible during a windstorm. So I'm curious, like what what does the maintenance of those poles and those lines look like compared to the 115s?
Yeah, I think in the scenario, if we were to improve upon, you know, an existing line, 115 takes a 230, we would be looking at, as you mentioned, greater right-of-way. Vegetation management's very much a big part of what what we do on a daily basis across the territory. And I think we would rely on again, we would look to Waukesha County. It would be part, maybe Lucas can speak to this. It'd be part of the the permit process in terms of, you know, what would the county require for us to improve upon that line?
Yeah, that's a good segue. Yeah, Lucas, it'd be great. You know, obviously we're debating today whether or not, just to allow for the possibility, the permit process is a whole separate piece. And I'd be curious if you could speak to what you would imagine stays the same and is required under current code versus what might change to make sure that any upgrade, you know, of the existing transmission lines can be done in a way that we're sure ensures public safety.
I'm not sure that I could speak to that directly. I haven't been involved in the permitting of the 115s, but I can look at it and get back to you. I think the major thing is that probably with the increased size, they would be looking at the conditional use or even major project permit process, which means that in permitting, they would go to the hearing examiner and then to county council for final approval, especially if it's a major permitting process. I realize you're looking for like distance and size and those sort of regulations. I don't have those right at my fingertips right now.
Because maybe this is a process question for, I don't know, I'm not sure who we're planning, but I guess like approving the allowance of these feels like it would be who of us to do it in tandem to also looking at what the code requirements are for a larger transmission line, because it might be different. So now maybe that's not something that comes to us, I don't know. But I'd be curious, like what is that process going to look like to to make sure that the CUP or major project permit process, you know, accounts for the different type of transmission we're dealing with?
Yeah, that's a good question. The permitting process will, for an additional use permit or a CUP, there's criteria in the code for all CUPs. They're sort of general. And then each permit would go through the SEPA process, the State Farm General Policy Act process. So that would address potential impacts that aren't covered by any of our existing regulations. So it's kind of a broad blanket, but yeah, we haven't permitted any of these, obviously, in decades. So yeah, yeah. We'd have to, it would be very site-specific, for sure, yeah.
So I wonder if I give a request to report back at a future meeting on what that process would look like and what aesthetic requirements we might include in that CUP process.
I think Lucas, maybe for the public hearing at the next meeting, let's, yeah, we can show the commissioners what the CUP criteria is and the major project permit criteria as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I can make sure that's right in there. Start off with it if you'd like.
Awesome. Yeah.
Yeah, a question for you, Lucas. The amendment has it as 230 KW. Is that just a typo?
Kilovolt?
KV in some places.
Well, the actual code has it as KV, but just in the heading for our topic, it's 230 KW and then that's relisted. The first the first box, comment one and exhibit A, it's got 230 KW and then it goes to 230 KV for the rest of it.
Of all these, that is a typo. Thank you.
While we're on the code section itself, sorry, did you ever have a little? Oh yeah, sorry. Sorry, I thought I'd jump in since we're looking at the code now. One thing I wanted to clarify, the way that the code was written previously, if a new transmission line or distribution line was under 55 kilovolts, I believe the way it was written, it would indicate that it would not require a CUP. The way we restructured it, anything that's under 230 requires a CUP. So is it the intent that previously 55 or below did not require a CUP and now we would like that to require a CUP? Is that deliberate? Or I also could be misreading?
Let me bring this up. There we go. Can you see that? We're talking about this line right here.
Yep.
I believe that was the intent. If that is incorrect, we can adjust it.
I don't know, you tell me. This is playing anyway, but presumably, I mean, that's a that's a considerable, maybe it's a considerable shift. Aren't like, aren't all the local lines 12 and a half? And so we're basically saying all 12 and a half new lines have to have CUPs?
That may be an error. I will look into it and get back to you. Now I'm questioning it as well and I don't think I can answer it. So thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I'd actually say that we have to make clear that that's not the intention. Because then you basically can say any extension of domestic service requires a CUP.
As a newbie, because today's a work session, right? And then next time is a hearing. What's the difference in how we like propose amendments or whatnot? Just wanted to like go me in on that process.
We even propose amendments here and what I'm speaking for Mark and I may be wrong, but the reason we're going over this is for things like that, you know, we have a presentation that reflects more of what our field on it is. Yeah. And finally, what we do here also, is that pretty accurate, Mark?
Yeah, sometimes we will come with a proposal and have a public hearing at the same meeting. And sometimes this is kind of more complex and new. And so we wanted to have a work session with the commissioners first. Again, just to suss out if you hear a comment, a great comment, and then we'll schedule a hearing formally at a later date. If you wanted to make any changes before that. You can also make changes after a public hearing as well. It's cool. Flexibility.
Yeah, most is like, sign still just be like, here's some thoughts. You have to take them, leave them. Like, don't have to do a formal motion thing right now, which is great.
All right, it was codes written. Actually, this is a particularly quick cover. Going down from 240 volt to 120.
So Lucas, the comment was made here that it could perhaps go down as far as 120, from 230 down to 120. And I want to ask if that's your intent or if it's not. From two thirty down to one twenty. And I want to ask if that's your intent or if it's not your intent. You might note that so that it's, it's very clear when it comes up for the hearing.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite, which section are you talking about?
Commissioner Brown, would you?
Didn't quite hear the comment.
Yeah, okay, so, so next comment. Section twenty dot eighty two dot zero three zero nine. The language struck out of there. The, the way I read this is any voltage below. That's less than or equal to two thirty kilovolts. Would now require conditional use. Converting down to two forty down to one twenty.
Yeah, it's covering everything all the way down.
I think we've, I think we've covered this, probably not the intent and yet they'll.
Who needs some revenue?
Fill, fill, fill some staff time. I'm sure that's exactly what staff wants to work on, because everyone's, everyone's outlet.
All right, so we can, Lucas, we can take that back and revise that language?
Absolutely.
You're on a motion now.
Sounds like they don't need it. They just, we just.
We can.
Could someone walk me through the threshold for what would make it a major project versus a CUP? I did try to look it up, but I did not succeed.
It's WCC, I think it's twenty point eighty nine.
Twenty eighty eight, one hundred.
Twenty eighty eight, thank you.
It's, yeah, yeah. So I looked, I looked that up and I just wasn't sure what would make it a major project. Like for this context, right, this has to do with square footage and, and other things. Like I wasn't sure what would make one of these projects a CUP versus a major project. I was hoping so we can shed some light on that.
Typically, it would be that it required that it's, I think it's more than, costs more than five million dollars.
That's what it says.
And requires an EIS. Those are the two typical.
Okay, so that's what would apply here to this.
Thank you, Mark.
And I, I wanted to make that comment here because. Not for you, but for the commissioners and, and when we speak and. Eileen has to just listen on her headphones to type out the minutes. So we always want to address. So, you know, raise your hand, I'll call on you. So she knows who, who spoke and. And we're a little more informal on this, but we need to keep that part up so that Eileen can get the job done in two weeks.
Good point, appreciate it.
Commissioner Brown?
Eileen, did you find those images?
Yes.
Did you say that, Brian?
I do. It's beautiful.
I will say that that's an example, but I've seen quite a few others that don't look anything, yeah.
Yeah.
There's actually, there's a big project that, Commissioner Graff, I guess I should say that all right now. There was a, there's a, it was a big project to electrify East Side in Seattle that might be helpful for commissioners to look at. Where they were upgrading from one fifteen to two thirty. It was a very. Controversial, you know, as you can imagine, anytime you're changing anything in a dense urban area, people have a lot of aesthetic concerns and, and also the potential. Health concerns that some people have, but I think it's a great one to look at in terms of like what before afters look like. And when we think about what aesthetic requirements we may want to include in the code or in the, the CUP process. One of the things that I've, in my prior life, having done some of this work in a different jurisdiction. The biggest focus that we took on the planning side was basically making. Our upfront requirements on, here's what these guys look like. Because they can look ugly and they can look non-consequential. And I think that's one of the biggest concerns the public usually has, and quite a few of the one fifteens in Bellingham run straight through the city. We've got, I mean, you know, there's a nice map that I don't know how outdated it is that we're looking at today. But you've got stuff running along Lake Weeze, Mount Baker, Baker View, Northwest Drive. Alabama Hill, you know, and a, and a number that run through central Bellingham. And that's not including, you know, the stuff on Hanigan, and it goes around Ferndale and over into. The outskirts of, of the, the big refinery or, or facility that's run by, where that is BP. But I think that's just like something we want to think about as well.
Yeah, Mark, I know you said you're going to come back to us and kind of talk through some of the permit process stuff, but how, what? How much of a plan is there to actually describe all that stuff out if this approves versus just? Kind of let it be dealt with with the CUP process?
Yeah, I mean, there's, we don't have design guidelines. Or design standards per se for those kinds of facilities. But it could be something, and we can, we'll look back at the CUP criteria and. Bring that back to you and, and show that. And certainly aesthetic concerns can be addressed. Even under the SEPA process, if we don't have adopted regulations that do, it doesn't mean. Can't do it. We, we could do it under SEPA if we consider it to be a potentially significant impact. So. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so we could have the option that this gets passed with none of that. And that, that language never gets specifically created. Or we could pass it with that language and then it would be, that would be in the, the process in the future for them.
Right, right.
It'd be more standardized.
It would be, yeah, and it would be. Project specific, right? Because that's when you nail that. Well, are you going by in a dense urban area or not? Are you in? Out in the ag lands or something where aesthetics are not, are not an issue or less than an issue. Gets very project specific.
So did you envision having a specific code relating to all of those aesthetics or, or not? It would just be kind of evaluated. Just to be just essentially negotiated with planning and.
At this point, it would just, yeah, we would just deal with that through the SEPA process and through. The CUP process or the major project permit process, whichever. One it was depending on the, on the scope of it. But if the commission's interested in us looking into more of those standards, we can do that. Well, the one thing we could do is, is. Lucas, you could maybe check with some of the other counties if, if they, how they process these things and if they have any particular standards. Or Brian, if you know of any that. That, that could address.
We're not reinventing that world.
And Brian, if you've, you've had your hand up for a while, but if you'd like to go ahead and. Engage with Mark a little bit, but go ahead and cover what you wanted to tell.
Well, it's, it is actually related to the comment on electrify East Side. That's a, that's a really good example of what was a large project that required the rebuild of a line. And we were subject to all the various jurisdictions, their requirements, and we would, we would work through that process. So. I'd be happy to share with you all, or I can send it to Lucas, I guess, the information I have on electrify East Side that might be. Particularly relevant to that question, you know, knowing that. Just amending the code, there's a whole additional process as we're discussing that. You know, we would want to, we would meet those requirements. So I'll, I'll send the information I have to, to Lucas.
Yeah, maybe that'll cover it, but if you know off the top of your head, do other jurisdictions have, you know, in their codes specifically aesthetics called out for these? Different sized transmission lines or are they usually kind of done through a C, the SEPA or the CUP?
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head how other jurisdictions are, are managing that. I'd, I'd be happy to. See what I can find out.
I mean, my preference for such code language. Would be to fit, would be to see defined aesthetics. So that PSC knows exactly what's required going into the permit process. And you don't have to spend time going back and forth while people decide what it looks like. If there's. If you guys have got recommendations that staff can say, yeah, that sounds reasonable, let's just put them in a code and be done with it.
Yeah, one, one thing I'd add on to that, I mean, I think there, there are definitely pros and cons to, to that approach. Like one. The clarity is great, certainly very helpful for PSC. I think that there's a philosophical conversation we could have around. What is the best way to use the P, the CUP process? And one argument, one philosophy is. CUP process is fantastic for communities and staff and, you know, the, the interested parties. To come together and negotiate over what it should look like. That's, tends to be more expensive. It's very one off, you know, it can be. Sometimes you get a great outcome, sometimes you get one that gets heavily one sided because your, you know, industry wins the debate or the community does and. That may not end up, you know, where, where optimally we all as a, you know, body may, may want. But it is very like on the ground democratic, democratic and like earthy. The other is to say, yeah, we're going to create design standards, we're going to put those in place, and as long as you fall within them. You're, you're still in both the CUP process, so it can still get thrown out, right? Because you can always add additional requirements in that, in that process. But it does create an easier structure and is more efficient. And then, and at the end of the day. The less efficient process that has more cost does come back to the right pair, right? It's not like this is like, we get to take a chunk out of like some private entity that, you know, doesn't just pass that on directly to all of us. So. There's a, there's a balance there. I don't know that I have a strong position one way or the other, but I think it's a philosophical debate that we could, we could engage in.
Any more questions from commissioners?
I, I, Chris, it's not related to the past side of this, it's related to something else.
Lucas, is there anything you need from, else you need from us, Brian? How about you, Mark?
No, I would just say commissioners, we'll, we will go back and do some, address some of your questions. Whether we can get that information back to you in any particular. Adjustments to the proposed code language. Don't know if we can get that back to you in time or advertising a public hearing at the next meeting.
It's already. The legal already went out for the public hearing on the twenty seventh.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hold a hearing on the twenty seventh. And then we will come back to you with some of the issues and. Comments and address some of the questions that you've had, including any potential code changes that we might have at the next.
So does that, does that mean we'll have some of this cleaned up then for that hearing or we'll be looking at exactly the same stuff? What's your thought?
We advertise what's in the packet.
So we have to stay with that?
Yes, but we can propose new language to you at the hearing and you can consider that. You will consider.
Okay, good. At least it's down in writing and then at that meeting. Okay.
So the legal just states what the topic of the discussion will be and then. I already spoke with Lucas, if there has to be an updated packet, it will be uploaded to the website so the public will see as well as all of you.
Okay, perfect.
Is it too late to change the heading for that? To KV instead of KW?
Yes, because it's already been posted to the Herald, but I can update it on our website.
Oh, that'd be good.
Any more comments? Do you know, let's move on to whole business?
Oh, sorry, I had a point on this. I, I want to bring up a point on the original language here.
I'm sorry, on what?
I wanted to bring up another point in this proposed code. It doesn't relate to power.
Okay, go ahead.
So section. Two zero dot eight two dot zero three zero conditional, this is subsection five, six. Says water storage reservoirs with volume exceeding fifty thousand gallons, subject to the CUP. Fifty thousand gallons translates into on the. Fire code amendments table. Translates only into. Of all the examples given, it only means. The system of fifty thousand gallons. Will only serve seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute of fire flow, which is only one above the minimum. So my question is, why do we need to set this at fifty thousand? Was a higher number. More applicable, because fifty thousand gallons is not a lot of water. And the second part is, is this interpreted as fifty thousand in one vessel? Or if you had several vessels that totaled fifty thousand, does that trigger the CUP?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think at some point, so you, my point is this is you, you could do a relatively small development. That you would, that you go over, you hit fifty thousand, you go over fifty thousand, and now you've got to do a CUP. And for example, if that water was supplied by using, you know, ten thousand gallon. And a HDP big tanks, a half a dozen of them. It's, it's, the impact is very little because of their small vessels. You know, they're probably sitting on a relatively flat, stable surface. They're not very high. But now it's triggering a CP, the CUP, and the question is, do we want that?
Right, I, I know that code's been in place for a long time, but I don't know the particulars.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is, let's, let's just revisit, say, is it something that needs to have a CUP? Or what is really the threshold that needs to trigger a CUP? And if it's, and, and my suggestion is, if the vessel is over, is fifty thousand or greater. An individual vessel, then maybe you do want to trigger a CUP.
When I read it, it seems like it's specifying it's one specific tank, but maybe, maybe that's not true.
It says water storage reservoirs.
Yeah, those with heights in excess of twelve feet above the ground level measured within twenty feet of all directions of the tank.
Yeah, I, I read this as, as either fifty thousand or twelve feet above. Anyway, since, let's just get some clarity because.
Okay, ready to move on? Whole business?
I had an amendment to the proposed business rules. Do you want to handle that now?
Yeah, we're, we're going to go into them and. But let's hold on a minute. When you're done, if gone through and done this. So, and I know that he wants to change one piece on it. And we could make a motion to do it, but I know we're going to have a lot of pieces. I'd kind of like to do a work through a little bit on it. And then vote on it. So maybe a few, the one piece we. When I spoke about earlier, you can talk about that, and then let's, we'll go with you. Okay.
Sure, sounds good. And do you want to talk about the other changes I did as well, to use the word numbers?
Do that and then we'll come over here and talk to you about that.
Sounds great. So with business rules, we looked through these, what, a few, couple pages ago. Oh, they're up there. One thing you talked about was just using the word commission member, I think generally. So I just scrolled through it and, and just changed those. We've used some different words. We use members of commission, we use commission boards. Places we use board members, we use members. So I don't think it changes anything like substantially. Just more for consistency. So anywhere that I find other words, I just use the word commissioners. To go from there. One change that I did make that's more, more substantial. Was in one point five voting. In accordance with a couple hours Ws, be affirmed to vote not less than the majority of the total commissioners. I added the words five out of nine commissioners, essentially required to come on plan.
So for that, remember y'all voted on changing the language, because that was the original language. And you voted to change the language because in case. There are only seven seated, if say two resigned, we wanted to make sure that you could still hold a meeting. And have votes.
Yes, and this was, I think it's in the RCW that it's different than what our county code requires. Basically, we, we, we can look at RCW and just make sure that that's correct. But I want to understand, it's the. But I want to understand, it's the affirmative, the wording in the RCW is the affirmative vote of not less than the majority of the total commissioners. Um, which to me would be, we have nine total commissioners. So to pass it, you would always need to have five.
Commissioner Maseri.
Yeah, but what you just wrote is, was in the code, sounds more like what Eileen was saying, that if there's less than that nine seated. You just need the majority.
Uh, so yeah, I think the debate here, so when this first came out, I had a similar question. Is around whether the RCW, when it says total commissioners, means total. Seats on the commission or total numbers of. Buts and seats. Right? So if there are seven people, because two have resigned, the total commissioners is seven. If total commissioners means it's a nine, nine person body, doesn't matter if there's three people there, total commissioners is nine. Then, then the change to try to, you know, have us have a four person majority, if there were only seven commissioners. Would not be in compliance to RCW, but it really comes down to what total commissioners is.
I, I want to yield. And give Commissioner Brown the floor, but I do have to ask, so what happens with seven or nine?
I mean, we can't make quorum, it doesn't matter, but.
So I just, I just wanted to ask that when we talked about what the total. Commissioner Brown.
Uh, actually, we'll yield for a minute, because I just want to check the RCW.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maseri.
Well, I know there was also something that was just passed by the council that related to. Um, some of the rules on the boards and commissions and it direct, it also, um, dealt with voting. And forum, or at least quorum, I don't know if it mentioned voting on these based on. Kind of people seated versus the total of the available seats. I don't remember that exact language, but I think it was more of, had to refer to.
It stated, I'm forgetting. It stated that, um. A quorum was not required to hold a meeting for advisory groups. But because this is a quasi judicial. Committee. There has to be a quorum because we have public that comes in. And in order to have the public speak, there has to be a quorum. Because that would be what action means. That's why originally I had the definitions of what a meeting is and then action.
Yeah, and I'll ask Director Prasone, we have, um. And when it comes up, we, we remember it and, and some of the commissioners have been here, well, we've had that before, but there are some things that we do. Where you have to have a majority of the total and there are other things we, and we do that you only have to have a majority of those present.
Correct, and that is with, um, com- comprehensive plan, uh, where it has to be the majority of the whole. So if there's nine seated, there has to be, uh, five, um. Eyes to move forward.
Okay, so I wanted to. Since I've heard this a number of times and I know Commissioner Sari has been down there and. And so we wanted to. Make sure that got explained. Uh, Commissioner Brown?
So I'd put against your amendment because why it's currently written is exactly the same as in the ACW.
Go ahead.
Yes, I guess my question would be, um, just to get more clarity, um. Is that? How, how many yeses do we need to have in what condition? So there's one condition where, you know, we've got nine people here, um, we vote. Great, five out of nine is pretty clear. Let's say that. Two people are absent. You know, so we still have a quorum, we've got seven. Do we still need five?
If it's for a comprehensive plan, yes.
So we always need five?
Yes, so for comprehensive plans, are any, any, um, voting that is, that is required for quasi judicial. And comprehensive plan, per the code, that's, that was.
So the whole point of this was not.
Well, well, so this may be really simple, but let's just say that we voted. At the next meeting and there were only five of us here, but the next meeting, we need to meet at six thirty. We don't need. We don't need five votes. We just need the majority. But if we're talking about, we're voting on changing the code, what from county code. Then we have to have the majority of the total board, the total commission. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so. So they were getting, I think we're, we're getting a little wires crossed here, which is, makes total sense to me, because. There, there's a lot of like. Similar stuff we're talking about, so. Let's take the universe where it's a nine, actually, it's not even the universe, last year. Nine person, nine, nine potentially filled seats, only seven people in seats. Five people show up to a meeting. You can pass regular business, the other quorum, you can pass regular business with three votes. We all agree with that, yeah, okay. The debate here is whether or not you could pass a. Code. You know, the, the higher threshold with. Five or four in that context. That's what we're discussing. Whether or not it can be the five, which is what it said before, it had to be five or nine. Or whether total members of the commission means seven, because there are seven buss and seats, and that means you could pass code members with four. That's I think what we're debating. And what I can tell is that we're not sure whether the state code. Means that total members is seated or body size. And without knowing that, we may not be able to. We, we, we may not be able to debate this internally, because we actually don't know what the code. Mark, because you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I wanted to just let you know that, um, Jesse Corkin is online. Jesse is with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and. I don't want to put Jesse on, on, uh, on point here, but. Um, Jesse was here to speak to the issue, uh, that was raised at the, the, the last, at the business meeting about. Uh, appearance of fairness doctrine. But I'm just curious, Jesse, if you have any, maybe you have or have not any particular knowledge on this question.
I don't, but, but thank you, Mark. I was about to jump in and just introduce myself, because, um. I, I am here to talk at least a little bit about the appearance of fairness doctrine when we get there. What I was going to jump in and say though is. Have you all broached this? Subject with Kellen Kustra, who's actually the attorney from the Civil Department that advises, um, planning. Um, and if you haven't, I would, uh, advise you to do that. Um, so just by way of introduction, you know, my name's Jesse Corkin. I'm an attorney in our Civil. Uh, Department, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. My position is the litigation coordinator position, so you can imagine. We have a county of, you know, just under a thousand people. We have some significant departments, including. The Planning Department, which is a large department, the Public Works Department, we have the Sheriff's Office, which operates our jail. And, you know, as a byproduct of a county that size, we have a certain amount of litigation that is always ongoing from. Whether that be people dying in our jail or. Our officers or public works individuals getting in accidents in their vehicles or, or claims from other members of the community. So that is, that is what I do. I handle the litigation and coordinate the litigation that the county is involved in. Um, Kellen Kustra advises. Planning, um, on some of their legal questions, so. I'm standing in for him today because he wasn't able to be here at this meeting and, and fortunately, Mark and Eileen were. Able to give me a heads up in terms of the appearance of fairness doctrine. Uh, and some of that, uh, we'll talk about that in a minute, but. In regards to these issues, I don't have the answers to them, but I, I, I would encourage you to, and I don't know if that happens through you, Mark, or if the commission. Has contact with Kellen, but I think it'd be wise to rope him in. And he can research these issues and give you some, some solid feedback on.
And yeah, thanks, Jesse. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would, I would, uh, suggest that we, we have Commissioner Grice sort of, I think. Uh, phrased it really well, but what the specific question is. And we can bring that to Kellen and, and then come back to you.
Would, would you take that?
Yep.
Over, I'll do. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the thing I know is that for what we have in front of us, we can pass it tonight. It's not going to change. It's just the clarity of what, what the thing we're passing means, but. The language shouldn't change, I don't know what the answer is, but it's just convenient for. So I will say, trying to look it up right now and I. The initial answer I'm getting, but I got to fact check it, is that it. Total members of the commission means the total seats, not buss and seats, which basically would stay five, but. We, it, it's illegal.
Yeah, and I don't really want to weigh in, but. During my long time on the commission, how it's always been. Uh, guilt of us as it's got to be five out of nine. And I, and I'm also to the fact that it may actually be different than that, but I think it's five out of nine. And we'll find out. Commissioner Brown?
Well, so the RCW says comprehensive plan approval required vote. This is RCW thirty six seventy four hundred. Approval of the comprehensive plan or any amendment, extension or addition. Shall be of by affirmative vote or not less than a majority of the total members of the commission. So it's.
Still the same language, yeah.
It's exactly the same as what was in the document.
But it still doesn't answer the question, those two, whether or not it's five or four, in a situation where we only have seven.
If there are two vacancies, yeah. Is it five out of seven, four out of seven, or is it still five out of nine?
Which we normally wouldn't spend much time debating, except that this came up last year, right? That's the only reason this. Yeah, and.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that, that's sort of why I put it in there, just to like, so we could discuss it, because I looked at that, I was also. A little bit like unsure as to what the actual numbers are and whether it's really like, well, how many votes do you need to pass this thing? Is it five, is it four, and what condition? So, um, we could, uh. If folks are comfortable, we could pass this thing. And then revisit this, we can always change our bylaws whenever we want. Um, we could also just keep it as the. Language of before, so it'd just be if affirmative vote not less than the majority of total commissioners and strike the language says five out of nine commissioners, that's come up a part that I added. And I think because at this point it sounds like we don't know whether it's five out of nine. Or three out of whatever, under what conditions, I would probably recommend that we just strike my addition. And the parentheses, five out of nine commissioners, because right now it's kind of uncertain.
Let's do that, we can change that if it's.
Sound okay? Um, and then I have, um, another, I, I'm sorry.
Pause right there for a second. Commissioner Hanson, you've had your hand up for a bit, go ahead.
Well, I would just think, and rather than take up the valuable time of a lawyer. If we decided that we wanted it to be. A majority of the seats on the commission, we could just word it thusly. And go on. I doubt that anyone's going to be, uh, challenging that legally. Just word it so it's clear what we want.
Commissioner Hanson, I, I believe what the question is being discussed right now is that if there are nine. Seats, even if. Nine aren't filled, if only seven are filled. That, the question was, do you need four out of seven because you're missing two members that, you know, that are not members? Or do you need up to nine seats available?
Okay, I, I see, I see. That's not so easy to word, thank you.
Be that, and thank you. Commissioner Maseri.
So Dan, your proposal is just to strike out your five out of nine commissioners, but you're leaving it as total commissioners and striking out what was members of the commission?
Yeah, yeah, because I think that in the RCW, what it says is the affirmative vote of not less than a majority of total commissioners. And I've added five out of nine, so I would, I would really strike out the parentheses, five out of nine commissioners and the parentheses, and leave the other stuff.
I thought it's the way we had it written originally, which was total. Members of the commission, what was, was how it was actually writ- written. I, I would keep it as the RCW, especially since it says RCW is statually required, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I would just do it as what's in the RCW, we'll get clarity on it and. Not mess with this.
Um, can I amend my motion then to that? Does that make sense to you?
Basically sticking with what's in the agenda.
Yeah. Why don't you withdraw? Or you're, you're talking about the whole thing or just maybe, go ahead and change it, let's read it back to.
Sure, yeah, so it would, it would say. Um, that sentence would read, this is one dot five voting. Uh, B would say in accordance with RCW thirty six dot seventy dot six hundred and RCW thirty six dot seventy dot four hundred. The affirmative vote of not less than a majority of the total members of the commission is statually required on comprehensive plan or official controls. So the motion? I would, I would make that my motion.
One second.
So just to, just to point a word. That's the language that's currently in front of us, so.
Yeah, the, the language we brought in is proposal.
Right, but what I'm saying is that the, what's on the floor, which I guess we technically haven't done a motion to approve what's on the floor, but say we had. Um, what's on the floor is that language, so it's like. If the motion is not to change the language, that's, that is what the current language is in front of us, that's what I'm, that I think. Yep, I, I think that can direct, yeah, so I'll give you that.
And I, I, I agree with Commissioner Grice.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I did not get that. Okay.
Uh, would you give the page and, uh, about approximate line number? Or, or what you just, uh, what we just talked about. Striking that language and just leaving it as its current state RCW. What page was that on?
Uh, that was on in the agenda packet twelve. So, okay. And under our business rules, it's page one, uh, under one dot five voting. Item B. Okay, and so, yeah, I think as, as Nick pointed out, which I think is accurate, uh, I propose that we don't change that language, so it would be a motion to not change. I, I'll explain it up now. So this is, this is what's, uh, I guess I will move to approve this document, so we can put it on the floor.
There we go.
That's what I was reading in my packet.
So this is what's currently on the floor, that's the language that we've been discussing. It sounds like the, the, um, the. My fellow commissioners good with it as it is, and so we don't need a motion to do anything further. Yes, and I will second that motion, so we can officially start discussion, um.
To approve the document as. For in my sign?
Yeah. And now we can do whatever other. Okay, so it sounds good. So in that case, um, I sent out a document, um, that I think you all got. Uh, it starts. Dan's notes, this document, you just wrote the words phrases, and that's, in that document is where I talked about. Change essentially the words that were variously members of the commission or commission board or whatever, just to commissioners generally. Um, and so I would. Um, and then I would like to add another part, um, onto one point five voting section D.
Let's, let's hold this for just a second, so go over that in, uh, go ahead, Eileen.
I would ask, uh, for the minutes. If we approve, if we go with, um. Doing this. Uh, motion first. And then we can say I've moved to amend, so that when the minutes, it could read. And the public can see that it was amended, what was amended in that motion. Uh, it makes it easier instead of. Having to go back and forth.
Sure.
Eileen, will you scroll down just a little bit, so we can see some of the corrections where he has changed it to get consistency on the word? So we have examples up there.
Oh, like from Commissioner and all?
Oh, yeah, do you have his?
I do.
Um. So, will you, um. Commissioner Dan, will you explain carefully just the members, what you did with membership? So that we know, and what this, that's all we're looking at, is what we did with membership or what you proposed.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. In, uh. Uh, in section one point three, special meetings. Um, it says, or a request of three members of the commission, I just put in the word commissioners, so that.
So, um, so what he did, and that is what I want to get in for Eileen, is that. Every place that says members of the commission, it's going to be replaced with commissioners. Okay, can you take it? I see another one, the next one down says members. And that's going to change to commissioner.
Yep.
And let's go down and find another one different, so we can state it, so Eileen, how to. What's that one there? We have commission members and it's going to change to commission. Commissioner. Yeah, it's going to be the same, uh, Commissioner Maseri.
Eileen, you go up to two point four, I don't know if in your version, I saw a typo on Dan, so I don't know if you changed it.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, it doesn't look like you have his in there.
Or consecutive absence in. Oh.
Is he a change to commissioners? I was just, it should be commissioner.
I'm going to need to have the PDF I sent with my changes.
And then in two, five members, just say commissioner.
Yes, your PDF change, probably have more than what's on this. Yeah, okay.
So I. The one that I had open was, um. What it will look like. Um, the edited version. I thought I got all of it, but I didn't.
Uh, what, what would be the easiest way for you for how to proceed from here? There's like a hundred. There's like a hundred and eighty changes, something like that.
I'll send you the Word document and you can read comments.
Okay, sure. Um, we just work, because we want to just kind of go through this and point out where I uh, change things. I said this out as a PDF, so I think you already have a copy of it.
Yeah.
It's highlighted in green.
Yes, oh, there we go. Perfect. That's the one.
Yep.
Um, and so I think the changes to this are, uh, if we go up to one point five, the voting. Um, so this is where we're keeping the original language under B.
Yeah, some plural versus singular stuff we have to address.
Yep, yep.
It's not made or.
Um. Commissioners and Article two. Bishop officers. About one commissioners.
And then we're gonna add that. You're gonna add D.
Oh, yes, right. On um, for one, sorry, if you could back up to one point five, there we go, voting for D um. I want to mention that in the past, um, the chairperson has always voted last, but it's never been kind of incorporated in policy. Um, and it sort of makes makes sense to me to have that as sort of a as a process. Right now we go through the rule and I think it's a different person does first every time. Um, and just for the the chair last, so I would say on oh, on one point five, there'd be a new item D. Um, and that would say irrespective of C one, which gives out the roll call procedure, in roll call votes, the chairperson shall always vote last.
See, I I hand you that paper or you'll have that on there. I read. It's just got one sentence at the top.
Irrespective of C I in roll call votes, the chairperson shall always vote last. Let me just add that. But I'm trying to make sure in the amendment in the minutes, I mean, it needs to be seconded before I can move forward.
I'll second it. I'm sure I'll make a motion, but. Far away, but I'll assume you're making a motion.
I'll make a motion and I will second it.
Second.
I would speak again, so. That gives the that gives the that automatically gives the chair more power.
And it, so I'll counter that. It's the intent why they do this is because the chair has more power and to a lot of people, if they see the chair vote first and they vote one way, they will follow it. And keeping the um, the chair um, at the end, is that people feel comfortable voting how they want to vote. For instance, um, if it just falls in anywhere, um, it's going to be in, and the chair votes yes, it's still going to be the same, even if they vote at the left or you know, it it's still the same outcomes. I'd be in, and the reason why they do this is so that you do not influence other people. They go, the chair is doing this. I'm going to vote the way the chair voted. Okay.
Um, so the way the way the county council does, which I think is equitable, is that they always start, whatever the next vote is, they always start with a new council member. So the voting sequence is always rotated.
Yeah.
So, um, which is what we do.
Yeah. Oh, uh, I think it's a good, I think it's a good discussion. It's like, I think you both have valid valid points. There there is a benefit to going last. You get to decide, do you want to, you know, be on the majority that's already going to win, and that can help with, you know, with unity. I actually think in this case, like, I think there is power in that because like a political power point of view, being able to like, make that decision last is valuable for whoever gets to do that. I think in in this body, having the chair who is appointed by us, and we are basically giving more power to that person. It's not a rotating chair, which I actually don't know if the county council rotates or if it's, it's appointed, okay. Um. So I think like in this case, because we're giving that power to the chair, is I I like the idea of having that individual vote last, and I think it also gives them the opportunity in a seven two vote or a six three vote to say, maybe I prefer to be on the six four side of it, but I'm actually going to join the majority for unity purposes, which actually, which I think has value to us as a body. So I'm in favor of the uh, for the. For that reason.
And I'll say one other thing with it is is I actually, because um, the question came up, I did a little studying and they specifically talked about that's why you put the chair last. Because that's how you take the most power from them. Get somebody new in, they think I'm a great person, or they think Russ is a great person. And they, you know, well, I'll vote the way that person votes. So you put the chair at the end, so the influence is the least. And you're correct, though, as far as the highest, yeah, they have the power, but whoever's at the end has the power. They're right. I uh, as the chair, I don't think I've ever done, oh, let's see, wow, I get, I have my mind made up. But the intent is, it's my intent is that I don't want somebody else swayed by how I vote.
I can tell you, if I got a choice, I'd always like to vote my vote last.
Um, and it says, and as vice chair, maybe this will go on. No, 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 which are you welcome to vote against the motion.
Yeah. It's all those, but I I, you know. It's just, it's a debate about the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
The rounds. Good division or Maseri?
So is this motion just to add this change into the current proposed changes of the rest of your stuff?
Uh, yes, so this motion would be to add this, specifically this item one dot five, new item D, respective of C one roll call votes. Um.
You have a good point, which is we don't, we don't have a motion on the floor for the commissioners change. Yeah, I don't know if we do or not. I don't think we do.
We don't.
So, but we could just add that, and we don't need to have it as tight as this. I was just trying to
So.
make sure I knew where we were at.
Yeah.
Because this was voted last time to add the commissioner, uh, to take out all pronouns and just put commissioner or whatever. It was already voted, so I could just add that in. Um.
Okay.
It was, it first it was for only the pronouns and just keep and what makes sense, but I could just add the commissioner. It's not. It's not something that, no.
It's not material, so.
Okay, so you just kind of adopt those changes I suggested and put them in there.
Although when you do, if you did review the commissioner versus commissioners, because it's uh.
It is.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Personias will tell you that, um, well, as long as I've been a commissioner, it's been eight years, and the chair has always voted last.
And now have it now, depending on how we vote on the motion, will we have that common mind? Or 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 reverse that trend? We won't do it that way. We'll see.
So to reiterate, the original motion um, from Commissioner Gray was to move to approve the document as we're in by staff. Um, Commissioner Dunn seconded. Um, Commissioner Dunn um, has an amendment to add a section D to section one point five voting. Uh, irrespective of C I in roll call votes, the chair shall always vote last, and Commissioner Gray uh, seconded.
Okay. Commissioner Maseri.
What's CI?
Good, the I is the last little.
It's not, it's not indented.
It's not.
It's just a, yeah.
Oh.
It's the.
I see.
I I will fix all of that.
Typographical.
As my.
Screw.
So. Are we putting these all into a motion?
I think there, I think there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor and an amendment.
Somebody online.
I'm.
Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, Commissioner Hanson. Your hand is up. Go ahead. Sorry, our screen's blocked down here. So go ahead. I just saw yours on.
Yes, I just, I'd just like to ask that we curtail debate and vote on this amendment.
Well, we have a call for the question.
So it will be clear to you, are we voting?
I'm I'm going Roberts on you.
Yeah, when there's a call, you gotta, you gotta vote on it. It's the super majority, I think, seven. Yeah, although we might be done with debate, saying we don't need to vote.
Like, what are we voting on?
The addition of the chair voting last.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Does anybody want to vote to vote, or should we just vote? Okay, Eileen, uh, we're gonna vote on this motion now, this line.
Okay.
Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Bossari?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Uh.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yeah.
Passes.
And then, and then just clarify, the other um, corrections there, the my suggestion, the commissioner, we're gonna call those scrumners airs and um, add those in, like, maybe you and I can talk offline if we need to for anything else comes up that.
Yes, um, you do have the original motion on the floor, so.
Which I approved from. Yeah, I know, if we had another.
I know, okay.
Oh, the truth.
Yeah.
Um. This is the email I sent out earlier, and so what's, what's driving this, this is. Um, I had several people approach me and they're concerned about the trend, which I think really started with the county council. For some members to never turn up to meetings or almost never turn up to meetings in person, but to do it online. And now I I don't know the history of that. The 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 playing commission, because I frankly, I didn't really take notice of what was going on in the last couple of months. But I do know in the county council, we've got one county council member who may not have turned up in person for over two years, almost every time I'm in. I think he's once or twice he's turned up. Um, but it's really sort of starting to impact people's impression of the council body, or at least that council member. Um, and so I think we should have a policy about um, percentage of times, the occasions for which we turn up remotely here. Um, I'm hoping, and I think this discussion, the council is going to do the same thing on the council as well. Because the other council members, I know at least the ones I spoke to, are are pretty irritated by a particular council member's failure to turn up. So um, so I was proposing a new subsection D under Article one, one point two, which states while hybrid meetings in person slash online are permitted, commissioners are expected to attend at least seventy five percent of all regular scheduled meetings in person during a calendar year. That's my motion.
Um, sorry, Mark. Um, Commissioner, I I would just ask um, uh, in respect of um, Jesse's appearance here, that um, is that something we could table until after Jesse's finished or engaged with you on the discussion of appearance of fairness since we.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So is that okay?
Okay. So, I'll re- I'll withdraw my motion.
Hi, thank you. And and I'd like to talk with you when when you know, when we don't have a quorum, like, you know, and I'll explain a couple of things. And I think uh, Director Personias and Eileen could both explain what I did. I'll bring up with you. And and it's fine.
I don't think he intends to table a motion for another meeting. I think this is going to table a talk.
Yeah, yeah, I got what, yeah. Right, uh, where are we at here?
So uh, we invited Jesse to come and speak to you, to the commission, because at your business meeting, the issue of uh, clarification about the appearance of fairness doctrine and um, in particular, when you're operating in a quasi judicial mode versus a legislative mode, let's say. And you know, what what that doctrine says and what it means in in practice for you if you're engaging in conversations with folks outside of these meetings. Uh, and so I asked Jesse to kind of come and speak to uh, a little bit of that.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I appreciate that uh, introduction. Uh, I had a chance to introduce myself a few minutes ago, so we can forego that uh, and get down to business. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna read kind of what the appearance of fairness doctrine is. Uh, under the appearance of fairness doctrine, proceedings before a quasi judicial tribunal are are valid only if a reasonably prudent and disinterested observer would conclude that all parties obtained a fair, impartial and neutral hearing. So um, this reasonable prudent and disinterested observer shows up a lot in legal tests. Uh, I don't know who this person is. Um, you know, I don't know how reasonable and prudent they are, but it's often a standard that we use in the legal field. Um, and in this situation, what we know is that uh, this appearance of fairness doctrine only applies in a quasi judicial setting. So um, for our purposes, RCW forty two thirty six uh, O one O deals with local land use decisions, and I I presume you guys have have read that, but in preparation for this hearing, I had to get familiar with it myself. Um, it says that the application of the appearance of fairness doctrine to local land use decisions shall be limited to the quasi judicial actions of local decision making bodies, as defined in this section. So quasi judicial actions of local decision making bodies are those actions of the legislative body, planning commission, which is, you know, applicable here, hearing examiner, zoning adjuster, yada yada, which determines the legal rights, duties or privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested case proceeding. So that is the RCW legal definition of a quasi judicial proceeding. In the doctrine, uh, the appearance of fairness doctrine only applies to that. Uh, it does not include legislative actions, adopting, amending or revising comprehensive community or neighborhood plans or other land use planning documents, or the adoption of area wide zoning ordinances, or the adoption of a zoning amendment that is of area wide significance. So there's a difference between what they call a quasi judicial proceeding and you know, when you guys are acting in legislative mode. And I I'm I'm gonna ask you guys to give me some clarification as to when you are operating in a quasi judicial proceeding versus a legislative mode. Mark, prior to this, gave me a couple examples, and he said, you know, for a quasi judicial proceeding, that might be a site specific rezone, okay? So that was the example he gave me, and you guys can kind of explain to me what that would be in practice. If you're operating in legislative mode, the example he gave for me was maybe reviewing an area wide rezone, right? And that was kind of referenced in the RCW. A brief research of case law gave me an example of something that would not be considered a quasi judicial proceeding, which would be the approval of a church's application for a CUP, condition use permit for additional parking spaces. They found that that was an administrative hearing rather than quasi judicial. So for purposes of the applying this appearance of fairness doctrine, appearance of fairness doctrine, what actions are you taking from your perspective that would fall in this quasi judicial proceeding category?
Thanks, Jesse, and maybe I can, I can sort of moderate a little bit with the commissioners. Um, so when we talk about site specific rezone, that is uh, an individual property, right?
Okay.
With individual property owner or a company or whoever. And if that person uh, or individual comes to you, to an individual commissioner and speaks to you uh, uh, about that, uh, yeah, trying to get obviously your favor, uh, that you would be acting in a quasi judicial manner on that. If it was, um, as we will go through with the comprehensive plan, an area wide, there may be area wide rezones or text amendments to the zoning code that would affect multiple properties. Then you're acting, that's the legislative mode, right? You're not, you're not benefiting one individual person. You might be benefiting multiple people. Uh, or or not benefiting them in the case, whatever the case might be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that that absolutely makes sense. Hmm.
Commissioner Hanson has a question. Go ahead.
Sure.
Well, there's a note that is, this is, you're making extremely clear. Um, my question is, does the planning commission ever have to review development agreements?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Great question. You, you do not. Those are permits. And so those go to uh, a hearing examiner for a recommendation in a hearing, and development agreements ultimately uh, are decided by the county council. And in in all of our permitting codes, it's the hearing examiner, not the planning commission that that uh, approves permits, right? Or or holds hearings on permits. That's why most of what you guys do are uh, more in the legislative uh, side of things, right? You know, comprehensive plan amendments, development regulation amendments. I area wide. Area wide comp plan map changes or area wide zone changes that affect multiple properties. Um, occasion, and I'm trying to remember if you've ever, we've done site specific rezones. I I I think they will come up occasionally, but they're. They're kind of more the rare animal. Um, they would.
That one that went out of Everston where there was egg property with buildings on it, and they wanted to expand the buildings for processing for egg.
Then open space.
Oh, open space would be true. That's true. Oh, those open space applications. Uh, Eileen just mentioned those would be site specific, right? Because those are individual property owners. Uh, Jim, what are you talking about the propane? One?
I'm not sure if it was a propane or with some farm farm building technically on egg, but it was all developed. In any case, this uh the um open space uh certainly would be applicable.
Yeah, yeah. I I would say. When we we do more text amendments. Then we do map amendments. Uh, and so if we do a text amendment. It typically doesn't specify a particular property. It it would apply, you know. Generically to any property that would be meet that criteria. Um, so it would be hard to.
It it sounds like based on what you guys are saying, that most of the decisions that you're gonna make um as a body and as commissioners are going to fall in the legislative mode. Is that fair, Mark?
I I think so, yes. But I think, Jesse, one of the concerns that was raised was. If someone comes to you and speaks with you, must you disclose that? Uh, to to the rest of the commission or to the to the public prior to making a decision that might affect that individual?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Um, you know, so so one thing, uh, like you said, it's if you have that communication, I think one thing you can do. To remedy it is to disclose that communication before everybody, right? Um, and with the appearance of fairness doctrine, uh, much like what we deal with in the legal community in terms of impropriety, it's the. It's not the impropriety, it's not the um, you know, unfair communication is the appearance. Of the impropriety is the appearance of the communication being unfair to one side. Or the other. And so that's why we get this reasonable prudent and disinterested observer. Standard, because really it's about maintaining the appearance of propriety, appearance of fairness in these situations. So. Um, if you have, so you're talking about if you have communication with an applicant or something like that, one on one, prior to a decision being made?
Yes.
Mm hmm, yeah, then and can you give me an example of how that communication would happen? Would that communication be initiated by the applicant?
I'll ask you guys, does it? Ever happened?
I mean, I would say it can be by the applicant or it can be by the neighboring property owner that opposes the application, you know, for example, like those. A- any of those who power or environmental group that says, hey, uh, ex. Ex farm owner wants to turn their land into a strip mine, and that's in front of us. Understandably, you would imagine that a number of environmental groups or individuals may come and want to approach the commission. As a body, but also may approach individuals outside of the commission, and that's a, because it's a site specific, that'd be quasi judicial. And would need to comply with the appearance of fairness doctrine. So I think that was kind of the scenario or type of scenario that we were interested in. What we should do best, and in particular, within section two point two B of our own bylaws that indicate that we. We had a discussion last time about whether or not we should be banning those conversations. Or whether or not the current language that had, you know, that says use discretion was appropriate. That was kind of the back and forth we were having.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that was, um, Eileen sent me those, um, I guess the bylaws, right, and or the business rules. Um, including two point two B, which is which is highlighted here. To answer your question in regards to the discussion you were having before, you know, should we ban that kind of. Communication in my initial reaction is yes. So if you if you, I would avoid that communication, or if you have that request from somebody in those situations that you. Discussed, I think there's a way, you know, politely to say that that's something that's before the commission. I can't have that conversation with you. I can't discuss that with you. That would be my recommendation to you. There's going to be instances where that conversation takes place anyway. And in that case, I think it's important that once that conversation takes place, that that gets disclosed later on. Before the board, because that's what you're going to be able to use to ameliate uh or, you know, relieve yourself of this, you know, um. The accusation of the appearance of fairness doctrine, right? So, uh, yes, I would avoid those conversations. Um, you know, I would. I would do what I can to avoid those conversations. I think there are ways to politely decline to engage in those conversations, but like I said. There's gonna be situations where they they do take place, and I do think the remedy for that is disclosing that. Um, was essentially an ex parte communication, right? It's communication outside of the uh tribunal. Um, that's going to decide this. And the way to remedy ex parte communications is to make that disclosure. Um, in regards to the language that you guys have, and in the language that's as written now. Is an individual commission member, and are we staying with commission member or are we going with commissioner?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, commissioner, okay. So it will say an individual commissioner. Should it should use discretion discussing with the applicant for specific land use or others interested in the application, any requests. Before the commission on which commission members will vote. And should avoid committing any specific course of action regarding the outcome of the hearing. Answering question, excuse me, answering questions related to time, place and commission procedures and policies is permissible. Um, I think that's fine. Um. I think it may be wise to add language that mirrors some of the language in the RCW. Um, you know, if you guys want to do that, um, you know. Because this appearance of fairness doctrine really only applies to quasi judicial quasi judicial proceedings. It may be worth making that distinction in your business rules.
Brown.
So I don't need. So the case of a an open space application. If John Smith wants to put in an open space application and wants to talk to. Commissioner Hanson about it, but that matter is not yet before. The planning commission, then I don't see any restriction in Hanson talking to John Smith.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's only when it's only when it comes on the agenda.
The distinction would be when that item.
Yeah.
Does come on the agenda, then the commissioner should disclose, as Jesse said, and just say, I had a conversation with. Mister Smith about this, and that just gets it out on the table. That's all.
Yep, yep, exactly right. Mm hmm.
Commissioner Brock.
So last time in front of us, we had language that uh commissioner had done before that said. That would revise this to an in- individual commissioner shall not discuss with the applicant for a specific land use. And this is something where we need to change this language. Anyways, I would argue we should say with the applicant for a quasi judicial land use matter. Um, or others interested in the application, any requests before the commission on which. The commissioner uh will vote and shall not commit, as opposed to should avoid committing. Uh, to any sort of course of action. So that was the debate we had last time, and we decided to table it to get in legal counsel. At the time, I pushed for. More flexibility rather than less, because I was nervous about being told exactly what I can or cannot do for legal reasons. I'm like, I love it, but. The we're we're getting, I think, you know, helpful legal advice here. Maybe this is the time to reha- to bring that back up and and make a motion to add the language that. Commissioner Dunn goes last time, um, if that's okay, the body wants to do. Commissioner Hanson's had to races.
I just didn't know if he was gonna make a motion or quit right now.
It was his language, so I mostly wanted to put it out there, but then if he wants to make the question, I I'd rather not steal the language.
Commissioner Hanson.
Well, I'm just wondering if this should be a homework assignment to make this in line with the RCW, because, for instance. I think we shouldn't be engaging in ex parte communications regarding an individual application with either the proponent. Or opponents. And that if we, and that we should then disclose if we, if we're unable to avoid that. That contact, then we should disclose. So I think it's important that we not just, um. Not just prohibit this kind of communication with the proponent, but also for with the neighbors.
Okay, Dan, that's right. Uh, what's the uh, what's Jesse, what's the language in the RCW? Do you have that? Could you give some tips there?
I do, yeah. So. I mean, I just read some of it to you. So the the what I was just reading to you is the the RCW forty two thirty six oh one oh, which is the definition of local land use decisions. Um, and those define quasi judicial, excuse me, quasi judicial actions. Um. As those which determine the legal rights, duties or privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested case proceeding. And then it defines um legislative actions. As those adopting, amending or revising comprehensive community or neighborhood plans or other land use planning documents. Um, so that that's that's the language that, you know, um. Essentially defines the fairness doctrine as it applies to these local land use decisions. Would it be uh prudent for. You know, myself and likely uh Mister Coustra, who's the attorney that advises planning, to wordsmith. This particular section, um, and send a. Revision to the commission, um. For you to review prior to your next hearing, when you could then, you know, potentially adopt that language. Um. If that's not feasible, you can let me know. That's just a proposal, because I don't know exactly how your guys' hearing schedule works and when you need to. Adopt these business rules, but that may be an option.
Yeah, I'd say we could do that. Um, and and certainly, it you may want to read the whole business rules and and advise us if there's anything you come across. I think we could also take action today to make a few small changes and then. Make additional ones later. I think that would be fine. I don't think it'd be a hard request to do that. And reading. RCW forty two thirty six dot zero one zero, there's no language in there on my reading that we would need to include here. Because it basically just defines what a quasi judicial action is. So as long as we just say that this refers to whatever we're writing, quasi judicial actions. Then we're then we're basically covered and not, we wouldn't be out of class with anything in that section at least.
I agree, I agree with that assessment, yeah.
Jesse is the chair. I agree with just helping you work this and come back to us with it. Uh, this thing that we're talking about right here, coming back to us the next meeting, that would be great, on this section right here.
Okay, I mean, I suppose if we could do both, if you guys want to vote and make some changes today, you you can, I mean, you know.
And that's, that's why I said this section right here.
Okay, just two point two, two point two B.
Unless there's something else that we, you know, that we uh believe that we that you're legal and, you know, that we need to have your legal opinion on it. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I I should a- a- agree with Nick. Um, I would I would make a motion that um. Jesse reviews the the whole thing, I think we review the whole thing. If there's anything else to pick up, we're like, hey, by the way. Here's another way of wording this, or we missed something, or it's like whatever, um, and to come back with those for suggestions for those. Um, I think it's always, uh, I don't always agree with lawyers, but I think it's great to have their their view and their opinion on a thing. Uh, so at least we can like have that perspective and then and then discuss it, um, really one. So I would, I would make that as a motion or request for. Uh, legal to review the entire document and come back to us.
But um, let's let's hold on, just get this straight, because we got a motion and I need, go ahead.
Uh, just a reminder. You all have voted to uh approve this document prior, so I would suggest coming back. If you want to make more changes, you would have to make amendments to those votes, because it was adopted. The only changes were the specific ones that um were highlighted. So just as a reminder. That was a vote.
Um. So what would you like to do, Commissioner? So we have him take a look at this. I mean, it'd be nice to have a look at the whole thing, but as Eileen has pointed out, we've. You know, we approved the document, and we have a few changes that we're doing. Um, the question, Mark, is how much? How many meetings can we go on this?
Yeah, um, yeah, uh. Kellen Coustra, uh, as Jesse mentioned, is our attorney. He couldn't be here tonight, uh, because he's also now representing the charter commission. And they hold their meetings at the same time, which the commission holds your meetings. So, um, but we can definitely have Kellen. Perform that review and then know if there's any, if he has any suggestions and and Jesse too. Um, bring that back to you at a subsequent meeting. I can't promise that that'll be at your next meeting. Um, yeah, we can look at that.
Um, so we talked about that, that change this commissioner. And I need if we approve that, uh, or is that going to be something you're gonna work on and come back with us to?
Yeah, that one, we decided that it didn't need to vote. It's just something that.
Sure, right. And.
Go ahead.
Right, just to clarify, so in the rules, I think one thing that we kept was. The amendments rules, um, rules can be amended by majority with this meeting. They also be amended by any regular meeting with four days' notice. So. Um, if we came back to change whatever, as long as we got a couple of days' notice, um.
So I I think we have time to, and I'm not saying we can't work on it at the next meeting, but. I my belief is that if we have a lot of things, because sometimes we get these things and they're very depressing and we go. A long time, and then maybe this waits another session or something like that to keep cleaning this up, because. I don't think this is a, it's proven itself not to be a one meeting uh session to. To put this into, let's say, modern day order. It's just kind of.
You draw the this particular issue.
Um, the issue of like, we're cleaning up this whole document, correct? And I don't think that we'll solve it all tonight. We know we won't, because the attorney's gonna look at it and come back with something.
But I'd still like to have my discussion on this item.
Yeah.
And there is the original.
I'm still on it, too.
Yeah. Hey, Commissioner, what's there?
I'd make one comment that we do look at this every year, and if we keep pushing this out, we're gonna, we'll come back around to it and see it again anyway, so.
Be continuing, right?
At some point, I mean, we've been living under this for a long time. I don't know, I just don't know how much time I want to keep spending on it. I would be comfortable if we just adopted it with the current language and we got. Recommendation for next time we saw it even, you know, that's my comfort level with it.
Works for me. I concur.
So, um, are we good with Jesse? Okay, so Commissioner Brown, go ahead.
Uh, so I I I don't want to go back and re-explain everything to sit list, if you want me to. Um, but my motion was to amend to add a new section, article one, one point two. To include the words and subsection D. While hybrid meetings in brackets in person slash online are permitted. Commissioners are expected to attend at least seventy five percent of all regular scheduled meetings in person during each calendar year.
We could read that loud again. Our, I think it's our expected.
Commissioners are expected to attend at least seventy five percent of all regular scheduled meetings in person during each calendar year. So it doesn't stop people from doing hybrid. I mean, probably Frank, the next meeting, I'm gonna have to do hybrid myself. It's all intended to prevent it, and in fact, RCW, the RCWs require that all meetings can be both, right? But it's to set a minimum expectation for what the in-person attendance is supposed to be.
And and you made a motion, correct?
Correct.
Do I have to play me?
I'll I'll sign into for discussion.
And and so, um, um, I appreciated the use of word expectation. Some of you know, and you you guys don't, but I'm really, really old.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah, and I. I think in eight years I've missed three meetings. But I ended up doing a lot of them soon, because I was really old, and I shared them too. And that might happen again. Of course, I only have till next January. And if I make about three more months, I'll. And if I make about three more months, I'll have made down.
And Kelvin, no, let me just be really clear. It's, it's, it's not intended to in any way restrict what you need to do from a health perspective. At all. And I think in the case of the county council member. If that county council member was absent because of a health issue, I don't think anybody would, would be upset. At all. The problem is, is they're not absent for. In fact, in my understanding is they're not even in the state a lot of the time. So.
Well, I was alone and I think I care at every meeting, but I was alone. I don't think either.
And I don't think you missed him.
You know, I try not to miss anything. And I just, I appreciated having you word of that.
It's sort of requirements and expectation. And, and I will tell you under the county council rules. If a council member is absent for three meetings in a row without being excused by the council. They can actually be kicked off the council. So that's, that's in the charter. Oh, it's in the county charter.
It's also in the business rules if you miss four consecutive meetings without an excused absence. It could be questioned, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the public's expectation that if you're elected to a position or you're appointed to a position. You turn up and you're engaged. Otherwise, it brings the whole body into disrepute. That's, you know, that's, I think what drives a lot of it, so.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely find I communicate better with people in person. Um, but I also know I've been to a lot of advisory meetings where there's a lot of folks who are online and for, for various reasons. But I was, I was wondering if the folks who, who are online, if you're comfortable, let me describe a little about. Why you prefer to be online, what, what, if there's any barriers to coming in here, what, what's your thoughts on, on this thing?
I can go first.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jefferson.
So for me, there's multiple things that take place in my comfortness of being home. I work from home and I work two jobs. I, I have been on hybrid also when I was in Tennessee for a funeral. Um, I also have been on when I've been in Spokane and other locations. Um, attending travel and training for my other job. I just do it from my hotel. Um, and then. Most importantly, and it usually happens around the most, the most specific time for my health is around October, November. I've noticed the last couple of years, that's when I get really sick. And I'm very protective of myself over, because the last time that I got sick. It was very difficult to. Uh, make it through and I was very scared. So I'm very intimidated to be in. Too many locations too often. And I think if, if it is going to be pushed as an issue, I think seventy-five percent is a high number. Because if there is a reason for. Travel or training or whatever the, whatever the commissioner's reasoning is, seventy-five percent. Um, is a very high number. And so. Um, yeah, that, that's where I come from anyways. That's my perspective.
Commissioner Jefferson, do you have a proposal for a different number?
I guess I would start with fifty percent. And I mean, if you're going to be. In meetings in person fifty percent of the time, that's still a lot, as long as you're available and present. At hybrid meetings, following our current rules, which are. Um, not to miss what I think Eileen said, four meetings unexcused. Or without being excused by the commission. So, um. I'll defer to Jim and others.
Um, Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm not muted for a change. I've got a couple concerns. One is that I have a wife who's medically vulnerable, so if I am coming in person, I will be wearing a mask. And you're, and the COVID epidemic is not over, by the way. Um, the other thing is, personally, I'm a prostate cancer survivor. So there are frequent trips to the restroom are required. And so with a hybrid, I can care, I can. Listen to you all talking while I'm making a quick dash. Whereas there I'll have to go out into the hallway and go down hall to the restroom. So I don't think my particular needs. I would, should dictate what you all, what we all do, and I certainly respect the decision.
There and as an individual, I said earlier, for you. If I, um, and somebody's here, they have a cold or whatever, I can't stay. And the masks, I have to wear these all the time. When I see my kids, they have to wear them. My kids haven't been, big one's been in my house in the last couple of years. And. My medical bills are beyond, but. They're out of this world and. Those are, my doctors are almost all University of Washington and these are their rules for me and. Um, they finally, I hook up to a company, I'm buying human blood products every week. Because it has the antibodies that I don't make and that's how I stay alive. And, um, and December. They upped me by about twenty-five percent. And that's why you saw me come back because, you know, because I was doing everything hybrid. But they increased it and man, that made a difference. And that's why you're seeing me here. And I want to be here and when I'm not here. I'm not flapping. And I kind of agree with what Julie's saying and I agree with what Jim's saying. But I do wish that we had a way to encourage people that. That can be here in person to be here in person. So I just. Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
I would be really clear. I commend you for showing up based on what you've just said, right? Absolutely. I mean, it's clear you've got to go in to go through all that, to have all those issues and still turn up. So you have my respect.
So I, I really want to be here. I wanted to be here, you know, during that time. And then I. Kind of, I look at Jim and I go, I don't want to make Jim come. But I like, I like your amendment and I probably would vote against it, but I heard your motion. Because I don't want to make him come.
Right, but I think, and, and what's driving me is. It's, it's, it's the perception of the public of what, of the quality of the job we're doing. Right? Because I know, I know the council is becoming a major issue. People are really pissed off looking at that dais. And one guy never shows up. And I like the guy personally. Don't get me wrong, it's nothing personal. I like him personally. But he never shows up. And people saying. We elected you for a job, you know, you don't even bother showing up.
I mean.
Would it be a suggestion? I know council has. Um, there were some suggestions for council to, if they're going to be hybrid. To have their video camera on. So that way those who. Need to see their mouths or, you know, they can't really hear, they could see them and see their body language. And basically what you said in your, in your comment. Would that be an option?
Well, I, I, I don't see it as an option. I see it as an enhancement. And, and the problem is, I mean, even in this session, you put something up on the screen. Then we automatically don't see other people for the most part. And that's, I'm a criticism here by any minute, but it's still. Uh, I mean, even now with something out like this on the screen, I can, you know, I can barely see Jim. But because he's such a small fraction of the total screen, right? And, and that's just the limits of the technology. So, but I think it's more. Um, I mean, when during COVID, one of the criticisms, because we, at one stage, the whole council. Was, you know, for a long time was, was completely hyper, completely online. And the, and the amount of fight we kept on getting, you know, where, you know, people saying. You know, I don't even know if you're there, you know, I don't know if you're listening, I don't know if you're, you know, playing bingo or, you know, you know, playing Sudoku on. While, while I'm talking in a public session, whatever the case may be, right? It doesn't, it, it, it just started leveling and started increasing the level of disrespect. The people, constituents felt. The people that have chosen to, to represent them, so.
Commissioner Hanson.
Oh, just quickly, I forgot to note that right now I'm in Phoenix.
Why are you, why are you always in the warm place of the general?
Because I know what. Because unlike you, I know how to be retired.
I like that.
Um, so I, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Brown, you bringing this topic up. I think it's a, a healthy conversation for us to all have about what are, are. Hopes and expectations for each other. Um, I think, I think we're all probably aligned that we hope. And like to see each other in person and, and, you know, I, I have not met all of our commissioners, uh, in, in person yet. I, I, I hope to at some point because I'd love to meet you, uh, to meet you all. Uh, I do think there is a, this, the motion that's on the table. Um, there's a certain amount of this that I think we. Should maybe spend some additional time discussing just not this particular expectation, but others in as well, and like what we expect out of each other from a decorum point of view. We had some conversation last time. The, the actual requirement of being here seventy-five percent of the time, or fifty percent, or any number you want to choose, has. No real mechanism for enforcement. We as a body do not have the ability to remove any of our fellow commission members. So there's no. Only an officer, we, we can remove you if we choose to. That's in the bylaws. That's the power that we all hold because we appoint you. The county council appoints us. And only they can remove us. And if you go look at section, uh, two, four, excessive vac, uh, absences. Maybe grounds for recommending removal of a board member to the county council. And so if that's the conversation we're having is like, do we want to make that something where the recommendation of removal is part of not meeting that? Then, then we should have that debate. But at least it's currently written. We're setting expectation just internally, basically kind of saying, here's a flag and saying that we want to like, find a aim for. And I think we should at least discuss like, which direction we're trying to have. Are we trying to say, hey, we want to create new grounds for removal or grounds for recommending a removal? I'm not actually sure what that process looks like currently. I'm. Not sure if you did recommend, recommending or you do. But. Yeah, that's, I, I think we should be clear about if we're, we're just trying to say, hey, here's our hopes for each other versus here's something that we like, want to put a stick next to. I, if we're talking about hopes, I'm open to the conversation. If it's a stick, then probably, you know, we, we, we vote against.
Just critical response, though. I deliberately did not put in any stick.
Okay.
Right, I, you know, I thought about that, you know, is this an enforcement action? No, I, I put down expected, not required. I deliberately avoided any sort of punitive action. Because I'm just hoping. I'm just hoping people to step up and turn up. Is what, is what I'm hoping. And then that's the end of the story.
Would you read your motion one more time?
While hybrid meetings, brackets, in person slash online. Are permitted. Commissioners are expected to attend at least seventy-five percent of all regular scheduled meetings. In person during each calendar year. Very specific. It's just an expectation. It's only the regular meetings. And it resets every calendar year.
When you discuss it, it sounds like it's more of an encouragement to me than an expectation. But maybe you're, when I hear ex- expected, that carries more weight to me than encouraged to be in person. Are you? An expectation to me seems like that you, you're expected to do that if you're going to be on this board. And if you're not, then you're not really fulfilling your expectations.
I, I enjoy your theory. If, if your employees. Don't show up when they're expected to. You know, that's, I think that's where Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner.
And the, and the choice of word is specific because. Ideally, any future applicant for the commission should read the bylaws before they apply. And we want them to understand that if they are going to apply for the council to be appointed in the commission, they are expected to turn up. At least seventy-five percent of the time. If you just say encourage, oh, I can turn up or I cannot turn up. That's not a requirement from the applying position. So. Um, that, that was the reason I chose that word. Again, it doesn't have teeth to it. It's no, there's no enforcement mechanism.
Yeah, I think, I think this, this feels more like, I think this, as Nick said, more of a decorum kind of a thing to me. Being able to see people online is, is what I, I would prefer to have, so I can at least see someone's face. Um, I think saying you have to be here seventy-five percent of the time, uh, I, I agree, it does set life expectation. And I feel like rules should be like thou shalt or thou shalt not. And if it's thou shalt do something, then here's the consequence of the thing. Um, I don't like rules where it's kind of like, you know, you could or maybe or whatever. So we're going to say like, you gotta be here in person. I think you say, well, you gotta be here in person seventy-five percent of the time. Otherwise, we're going to make a recommendation of removal for whatever. But I also feel like, um. That removal is definitely at the purview of the county council. Like, you know, in terms of decorum, like, let's say I just started getting angry at somebody and really took it out on Dominic. It was like, I'm going to swear and call your names, whatever. Like, it would be reasonable to me then that people bring that to the county council, be like, Dan's way out of line. You gotta pull him out and put somebody else in this place. And I think likewise, you know, if somebody never shows up and their screen is always off and they're barely, you're here. I think it's reasonable to go talk to county council, like, hey, maybe this person isn't involved. It could be, maybe you pull that person out and swap somebody else out for that one. But it really is a county council. So I feel like, um, I would support something that says like, hey, it would be nice if, you know, I could see your face and you could leave your screen on during the meeting. But it's not a requirement. Um, but I don't think I'd be in favor of something that says, you know, thou shalt, or you have to show up, or the expectation that you show up. While we're still doing this, I do support the idea of somebody who's not here, not participating, then it's reasonable to go to county council and say, you know, maybe this isn't the right person for the show.
What do you want to do, Commissioner? Uh, Commissioner.
I just said one of the point, one of the reasons that, the other reason this has come up for me is we've got the comprehensive plan issue. There are going to be public hearings and typically a lot of people turn up to those. And, and I want the body to have the, to give the public the impression of engagement. And I just don't see that as being easy to do. If two, three, four of all people are not even on the dais. They're just online. So I think this year in particular, it's important. The public see, see the commissioners in person.
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to amend. To move this to section, a new section, two point four, title that section, I agree to. And amend the, amend Commissioner Brown's language to read. While hybrid meetings in person slash online, in parentheses, as originally, uh, as we've originally written, are permitted, commissioners are encouraged. To attend regularly scheduled meetings in person. Where possible, based on personal circumstances. When attending virtually, commissioners are encouraged to have their video cameras on. And my, I guess I'll wait for a second. I'll provide my justification.
I'll second that.
So my, my, my intent here is, one, I don't think the main motion is likely to pass based on the current conversation that, that we're having. I think this might be a compromise that could gain passage. And I do think, especially with the comprehensive plan coming up. Um, is a, is a reasonable hope and encouragement that we, you know. Can have out there for ourselves, but also for future commissioners. So I think it's a good point, you know, um, to the extent that commissioners are going to apply and read the business rules ahead of time, which I absolutely did not. Um, but say they did. You know, it, it is helpful to have out there. Uh, and yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's a, a good middle ground that lets people know that, yeah, we'd love to be able to have the engagement in person. Frankly, if you're in person, I think you have an advantage. You have the greater ability to have flowing discussion, which I know is harder, you know, with, with the individuals online. Um, I know when I attend meetings online, uh, like this, it is hard for me to, to fully track the conversation and, and stay engaged. Um, but that's a personal choice and everyone's got very different personal circumstances. I think this does a decent middle ground, um, for the body. So that's my, that's my justification.
I can kind of support that. I can speak. There, there's six of us here now, but we've had some hearings. And if, if, if Kelvin was gone, it's me and Dominic, and you would have a fifty-fifty crowd heated here. And let me tell you, the heat was intense. As these folks are laughing and going, and we would just sit here three feet away and it, it, it is something else to take that heat. And, and that's fine, but man, there, there would only be two of us sitting here and it was rough at times. It was really rough. So.
I appreciate what you guys did.
That, 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 I'm just saying. Where we're at now, this is. Yeah, comfortable, but I totally understand. You know, physical and, and health and everything. That is. I have no problem with that, you know. I, I get it, you know, to, to me that. So I like a compromise of things, but I sure like the encouragement of. To, to me, that, so I like a compromise of things, but I sure like the encouragement of people being here, especially on those hearing days. Just because for the last, for me, three years and some, there was tough, tough, not all the time, just sometimes really tough.
Right, so I clarify, you, you've had meetings here in the past, when was that you been to commissioners?
That's correct.
Yes, and everyone else was hybrid.
Now I know why people have been calling.
Oh, it was, yeah, okay, I said my, I, I said my point, that, yeah.
Eileen, can you show us on the screen where that new, I know I, I seconded it, but I, I just wanted to see where it would.
Right here, two point four, here we go above excessive absences.
I was about to ask, uh, can you clarify?
Yeah.
I'm trying to.
So then the other ones would change number.
So two point four excessive absences, you want to add?
It would, it would go, yeah, go above. I mean, I don't care if you go after, it's not really that important. I think, I think it felt better above excessive absences as opposed to below. Because it's less punitive, being right after excessive absences, I would, feels to me like that's a thing you're like, that's the stick after the stick. So I feel like above made sense to me, but yeah, it would be hybrid meetings and, um, and then the re- the numbers all changed subsequently.
Yeah, that, yeah, there'd have to be the scripters, whatever typographical stuff that would happen afterwards, but I, I don't think we need to address that as a. Um, do you want me to just read it out if you wanted to write it in?
Yes.
Would that be helpful? Okay. Um, while hybrid meetings, open parentheses, in dash person. Space slash space on dash line. In dash person, this is just the language that came out of the original, um, and then a space and a slash, uh, it's, uh, still, still in parentheses. And then, uh, uh, online with the. Close brands are permitted, comma, capital commissioners are encouraged. To attend regularly scheduled meetings in person with the hyphen in the middle of in person. Comma. Right, in person, uh, it is technically is a hyphen within person, um, just to be consistent. Uh, comma, when, oh, sorry, yeah, uh, where, sorry, where possible, based on personal circumstances. Period. When attending virtually. Capital commissioners are encouraged to have their video cameras on. Technically, to be the same as the other parts of the session, you put like an enter before the. Yeah, okay.
Because it's not what it is yet. I am trying to make sure it's different, so I'm not like adding anything.
It's the exciting part about voting on stuff.
I'm hoping this is a friendly amendment, but I think he said, the words based on personal circumstances. I think water down the intent of what you're trying to do. So, my friendly.
Just to strike that?
Just to strike that, yeah. Yeah, where, where, where possible, just leave it as.
Oh, where possible, sure, yeah, great. So, okay, so we'll just primarily strike based on personal circumstances and just, and it is where possible.
I'm having a friendly amendment, we all agree to it. Any discussion on him? Any comments, any discussion?
Would it be where possible or when possible?
Oh, but, yeah, I went back and forth on that. I wrote it when initially, and then I was thinking about it, I think it might be where, but I am not a hundred percent sure. Probably when, but I think either is, I think either is doable, like I always ask the internet.
It's when.
Uh, there we go. All right, that sounded authoritative, we're gonna go with it.
That was the motion, it was made second and then carried.
Yes.
The when.
Oh, I'll, I'll still launch my complaint of, of language being fairly squishy and, you know, the rules should be like, this is what you do, or you don't do whatever. But, um, uh, I would, I would support this just in the general sense of like, as a part of decorum and general kind of thing. This is what kind of what our, our general gentle expectations are.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
And I think, you know. My, my hope is that this sort of encourages. Encourages not to go down the way of certain members of the county council have gone. And if it doesn't succeed in doing that, then maybe, maybe we reopen the conversation and we can get more teeth into it.
So, we have motion, there are any exceptions? I mean, what do you call the role, please?
Yes, Brown. Dunn.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Moseris.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
passes.
And then just to clarify, we're now on the, we're now on the original motion, because mine was an amending motion. I think, I mean.
I think you've replaced my motion.
So we hadn't, we hadn't voted on that.
For simplicity, I withdraw my motion.
I just want to make sure it can like, it could be that, it could be that somebody wanted to agree with the amendment, but disagreed with the entire concept, and I just wasn't.
I mean, this is a tough crowd.
I like it. I vibe with it.
Good meeting, good meeting.
Uh, but we do have the original note still on the table.
Which is adopting everything. The parents, the parents of all the children.
Right, and so the idea is that we will adopt this, um, we have a couple, one, we've got a couple amendments to it.
But I think it's just maybe the attorney comes back with something, but I, I believe we're adopting our business rules and then we may reopen them later if we want.
And then the attorney is going to go, take what stuff, come back, and if we're looking at, we're like, hey, he just changed his date then, at a later date with four days notice, we can.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. We'll go right. Put this one to bed.
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah, what do you call it, role?
Yes, Jefferson. Jefferson?
Yes, sorry, trying to get off mute.
Moseris.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
passes. All right.
Anything else?
Uh, so man, a question, how does, who sets the agenda? Is it set by planning? Do you set it? Is it a combo? It's just set by planning?
We set by. But, okay, so we have nothing else besides, uh, Commissioner Brown.
Uh, it's old business, I raised a question to Mark about us, um. Changing the sequence of the meeting, so we're out of step with a charter review meeting. Which by the way, would help with Kelly.
Yeah, uh, well, those are set in, in business rules or in the.
Well, the charter, the charter review meetings are set. And we, we were get, last meeting, we added, we said, you were going to go and see if we could change. The sequence of our meetings, at least until the charter review is finished.
Okay, thank you. That's right.
I don't, I don't think they can.
The order of operations was checking whether or not rooms were even available, so we could debate whether we want to change it. And then as a group, we had to decide like, if somebody's like, hey, that, that day, that day of the month does not work for me, and you're basically out making a commission or unable to attend. And probably would not want to do that.
I do like Thursdays.
To that point, yeah, you want to look at alternate Thursdays.
Okay, I was about to say, the, um, Wednesdays are no longer on the table as there are work sessions from public works, so this is.
On Wednesday nights.
On Wednesdays.
Let's look at Thursday night, the alternate Thursday nights, at least until Wednesday.
They've got a, memory serves me right, they've got to be done ninety days before the general election. That's when they've got to submit them to the order of early.
Ninety days before November.
That's only six months, well, that'll be done in no time.
So, it's not for very long.
Yeah.
So, sort of roughly, it's all orders, certainly.
He's working on it, you don't have to give it any more support. The meeting is the journey. Oh, Commissioner Moseris, I didn't bang the gavel, go ahead.
If we find that there are alternate Thursdays that work, could we get those before the next meeting, we talk about them, so I can look at my calendar?
Yes. I want to see if this is, um, the, for those alternates.
One, could you look at the room?
Yes, that's one.
Two, the enabling ordinance for the planning commission. So I'm not sure if that ordinance sets the dates.
I don't think so.
It should, you never know.
Yeah.
It's good to check, just, it's good to check.
And the ordinance?
That's the time.
Then before you hit the gavel, you have another question.
Quick, quick, hit the gavel.
Comprehensive plan is not going to be a small ask, so what are we, how are we going to bite the, deal with that in bite-sized chunks?
We're going to deal with it in bite-sized chunks, um. The, um. There's a brand new element, uh, chapter twelve, which is the climate element. Uh, which is mandated by, uh, GMA now. So there is a draft of that, uh, that has been developed, and that is going through the Climate Impact Advisory Committee. We're going to take that, uh, for what I call a drive-by to the council first. Um, because they have expressed great interest in that, and it's brand new, so it's no history to it. Uh, before we bring it to you guys, uh, and that, and so I. Public Works Department staff are leading the preparation of that, um, and so, because they staff the Climate Impact Advisory Committee. Um, so, uh, I know we're working with them on the timing of when they would come to the council. They're going to get a final recommendation out of the Climate Impact Advisory Committee and then go to council. Uh, for briefing, get any direction the council might give on to bring to you guys. I imagine May-ish, maybe, uh, hopefully, maybe earlier, maybe we'll, we'll start doing elements. You'll get elements in places. The land use element, chapter two, which is the big one, that'll have UGAs, the population, employment, all that stuff is going to probably be last.
Okay.
Uh, just because of the way the train is moving, you know, not moving really fast. And there's a lot of issues involved with the city cities, and all of that, so this is our. Collaboration on the process. Um, that'll come last, but yeah, we're trying to get the, uh, elements done one piece at a time, and then we'll bring those to you guys. Um, those, those are also taking longer this time because, uh, the council has appointed multiple. Kind of advisory committees. And so they, the committees have had, have requested review of the comp plan and the ability to comment and provide input. So we're going through that process, uh, which is a time-consuming process, but once all of that is through, then those will come to you guys. But we don't have a schedule yet. We're, we're trying to get, given all the committees a deadline of, I think, the end of the first week of April to get us their comments back. Then we staff looks at them, we have to kind of filter them through GMA lens, and there will be competing comments from different committees. Different committees will have different perspectives and want to see different things. Uh, we've got to kind of filter that, take some of that back to the consultants to finalize. Then get that back, and then we'll bring it to you. So I don't have a good date yet for you on those, other than. Probably to tell you that the, the climate element will be the first one out of.
So in terms of the process, are we going to work on an element and then give it to the council, or are we going to work on everything and then give a whole bunch to the council?
I, I, uh, that, that's a good question, but that's a conversation I have to have with the council as well, how they would like to see.
I remember the council part of it last time, and I remember what the planning committee.
It was piece by piece, and then what we'll do is, uh, at, you will have a hearing. At least one at the end on the whole thing, the entire package, so that's probably not going to be until this fall, I would imagine. But we'll, you'll have individual opportunity to, to review, comment on proposed changes to each element as they come.
But are we going to have hearings, say, on chapter four, and, and a public hearing on that, and then a hearing on everything at the end as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we, so we need to plan for, we need to anticipate a public hearing for each chapter.
I, yeah, I, I, I think that's what we're thinking about, and it's, a lot of it has to do with timing, and maybe we can do multiple. Do a couple of chapters, uh, and win one hearing, maybe not, we'll, we'll just set to see.
I mean, some of them are pretty benign.
Yeah.
Um, and are we going to do those hearings here, or are we going to do them in the council chambers?
Yeah, that's another question. I know on the big hearing, it'll be, it'll be down in council chambers. Um, and, uh, obviously we have limitations on. The public here, um, but.
One of the, one of the reasons I'm asking is this thing about common. Is you're going to be a lot better off up on the dais if there's a lot of people in the room. Than you will be if there's like thirty people in this room.
Yeah, yeah.
You still want to sit in your old seat. It's also like, man, I'm obviously over here now, because like when the public speakers are all right behind your head, and then they're like talking into your ear, and you're like. Yeah, you know, I'm, 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 I'm all for chambers for big, for bigger here.
I have nightmares about that podium.
Yeah.
I'm shocked that we was here to talk about the, the electricity stuff, I'm like, yeah.
Well, the hearing is on.
The last year, yeah, okay, because a lot, last time I was in a public hearing on electricity stuff, man, room was packed and people were, they had all sorts of units.
It's probably like about the bottom.
Yeah.
No one reads it out anymore.
That can be that, yeah, they got.
It's both in paper and online.
We got to start putting in the Cascadians.
I've heard that if you, if you keep your cell phone up to your ears, it'll block the radiation from the transmission tower, from getting into your brain.
Okay, good.
The appropriate thing to start us from both to a chair, up to just a chair.
Time for a drink.